My clock just turned six thirty and I see we have a forum in the room, so I will. Call the meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. First items on our agenda tonight is the approval of consent agenda. Item one under that is vouchers totaling two hundred seven thousand three hundred thirty-eight dollars fifty cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Are there any questions regarding the vouchers? Second is minutes from the October seventeen twenty twenty-three meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Make a motion.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We'll now move into our first public comment opportunity. And I don't see any members of the public online. Do you have anybody online?
No.
Do we have, uh? Well, we just have Ronald tonight. Is there anything you'd like to address the council with?
Nope.
Okay. Then we will close that first public comment opportunity and move on to our annual department head report. And today we have David Lockwood, the head of our sanitation department here to report. So if you'd come up and stand behind the podium and. We'll be attentive attentively listening.
It's nice and short. Good evening. My name is David Lockwood. I am the sanitation supervisor. This year I was able to set up an office in sewer plant property at the end of Wilson. I am now hoping to acquire some of the unused vacant sewer plant land for the sanitation department. So that I have a place to work on trucks and containers. A D H E regulations restrict what I can store or use on sewer plant property. We hope to rezone enough of the property to build a truck garage and store commercial containers and residential polycarts. Currently, polycarts are being stored at a old A M P I building. Which is one of the part of the building they're gonna tear down, so I'm gonna have to find room for over a hundred cans more, so. Last year when I spoke with you, I asked for a new trash truck. You approved it. We bought it. It is in use greatly appreciated. Thank you very much. We now have over five hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment in use daily. My next goal is to provide shelter for the trucks and place the work, place to work on them. Trash for trash service in Hillsborough has expanded to include customers in the county. But outside the city limits to include both residential and commercial. So we took on ag service and the people on D Street as we go out right now. I don't know if we're gonna grow any more than that, but. We just hired a new worker who we hope to start training on Wednesday, probably Thursday or Friday. But he's waiting on some paperwork now. Seems like, uh, from the discussion with him, he knows how to work. If you can get out of bed, you're gonna work. Yeah, so he's fifty-one years old. He's, uh, driven truck for many years over the road. He lives in Mary. So I'm looking forward to working with him. And. It'll be good.
Good.
And, uh, at the cost of replating or rezoning is gonna be minimal. And the cost of a new building sixty by sixty approximately a hundred fifty, probably a little less, but. It's just, I looked into it and refreshing it, so. And that's about it. It's gonna be short. And trash is still coming up, so.
So of the two, two trucks that we have now, the sidearm trucks. Which one are you using most for residential or using the lighter truck now mostly or?
Not yet. I'm going to, once I went back by myself, I'm using the Peterbilt. But right now, right now it's in the shop and I'm using the freight liner for commercial and then I'm auto for residential.
Okay.
But the new truck is working, working good?
Yes.
Yep.
I mean, it's a used truck. It's got some little quirks, of course. I mean. So there's stuff to fix on it, little things.
Right.
And I know the little quirks and I know how to get around to me and all that, so.
Yep.
But yeah, it's, it's running good. I'm enjoying it, so.
So how are things, uh, with the, with the recycling component? Do you feel like that's going well?
Yeah, we're still picking up four to ten tons. We still get trash and different stuff in the recycle. I even get contractors that'll come and do stuff, you know, throwing in the bins and. That's gonna be, that's normal. But other than that, it's, it's going like normal, so.
Any other questions for David? It seems like things are working really well. The only thing I hear is, uh, the unintended consequence that, uh, from the heavier trash trucks of, of leaving some, uh, some potholes or some. Pushed up areas in the streets and in, you know, I guess we're gonna let Mr. Dale deal with those.
I'm finding all the soft spots.
Yeah. All right. Well, David, thank you very much. We appreciate the good work.
Thank you. And thank you for all what you do. So appreciate it. Thanks. Have a good evening.
You too. All right. We're gonna move into our business item section. And the first item up there is resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven. Taking code enforcement action on five-ten South Washington, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So you've got a reports, can, a condition report there on five-ten South Washington. Doug Dick, our code enforcement officer, has been working on that property for a while. Um, it's not gotten any better, uh, gotten progressively worse actually, the more, more action we try to take on it. Uh, we originally kind of took this as through our process we do for, uh, remediation of grass, that kind of thing, grass nuisances and stuff. Uh, but we, when we started looking at it a little closer, we realized this is construction waste and so we have to do this a little bit differently. Um, so what you have in front of you is the, uh, code enforcement action there, resolution there to set. Uh, well, it sets the, you have to abate the nuisance and then gives the opportunity for, uh, a hearing before the city council. Uh, they have ten days according to the resolution, um, so, you know, they have an opportunity. This is kind of a different piece of this and it will go, uh, direct, uh, excuse me, certified mail to the person, um. On this, it's, it's, it's really kind of like what we have been doing with code enforcement actions. This obviously is a little bit of a different deal because we would be doing the cleanup on this property. It doesn't need to be demolished. It's not necessarily a. A structure that's the issue. It's the hazardous material, the materials that are on the property, so. Uh, we, you know, when we do this, we use this, use city employees. We figure about two hundred dollars an hour, which is time. Time, labor, uh, benefits, everything kind of tied up with that and then equipment time too, so two hundred bucks a person, um. Kind of estimating it somewhere around four hours with two people, sixteen hundred dollars. That may or may not be the case of what it actually ends up being, uh, we'll adjust it as to how much actual time we spend on that, so.
Is there any chance you could put that picture up on the screen?
Possibly.
Well, I know Jane was wanting to take a look.
See it all right.
Can you?
Looks like a pile of lumber.
Yeah, it's mostly lumber. There's some other construction materials there. It's, uh. Uh, i- it, that picture was taken in the middle of October. If you go, there's actually probably more there now.
Um, so do you feel like the, uh, property owner is, uh? Um, responding negatively to, uh, to our desires and. And he's purposefully making it worse?
I, I, I would hesitate to speculate, but I know that Doug has been trying to work with them for several months. Um, and it hasn't gotten better, so you can draw whatever conclusion you want. Um, but we, you know, we've tried, like I said, Doug's tracked multiple times, um, so this is kind of the next step in the process. So if you do approve resolution twenty-three dash eleven, it would, uh, set that. Set that process in motion, um, and it would authorize, um, the notice which you'd have also have attached there. Uh, nuisance abatement order, uh, and also give the property owner ten days to, to file for a hearing for the city council, so. Uh, at least, nothing else, get him in here and kind of explain what's going on with that piece of property, so. Uh, we're recommending approval for this resolution twenty-three dash eleven.
Any questions?
The clerical item, this should be thirteen. We approved eleven and twelve with crystal. Um, at the last. So if we can correct that to resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, will we approve? Let's save some.
There we go.
Confusion on the other end.
Okay, there we go.
Thank you, Daniel.
Yep.
So we are, the resolution number is, is now amended to be twenty twenty-three dash thirteen. So are there any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-three dash thirteen as amended. Uh, just being the number of the resolution being amended, rest of the verbiage stays the same. Would anyone care to make that motion? Councilman McCarty has a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the council. Councilman by?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Councilman Lowen?
Yes.
Councilman Driggers?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, uh, as amended is hereby adopted and the mayor will sign. And the notification that payment order will go out. All right. Next up is a consideration of a proposal from K P P Energy. To participate in a solar power grant. Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So, uh, we've kind of talked about this before. Uh, K P P is putting in a pace grant, um, which goes through the rule of electrification. We, is that what it's called? The, the organization, um, but it's pace grant. So we're, they, they had initially put in an application, uh, or concept paper. And have been invited to continue the application process. In order to do that, they need to know whether we're in or out essentially by the end of this week, so. Um, what you have before you is kind of what the invitation letter is and then what would be included in that. Uh, so what would be installed is a one megawatt solar array. Uh, the piece of property that we're talking about there is next to the wastewater lagoons. I can actually pull that up. Um, so it, it, this, this piece of property is effectively not gonna be used for anything. Uh, the, the, of course, we own all the property around it and then. Share that so that we can see it. Technology's fun, isn't it? All right. Yeah, so this is the, uh, effective site we're talking about. Uh, the city owns all this property. This is the wastewater lagoon, obviously. Um, we retained this section here about seventeen and a half acres, uh, for expansion of lagoons. So what that is, is we designed the lagoon systems where we could build. Uh, kind of a north-south orientation, a replica of the big first cell here. Um, so if we needed to expand the lagoon system, it would go here. Um, this whole section is just farm ground that we own that's attached to that property. This section here is where we proposed. It's about seven acres. Uh, this is the Evergy substation. Uh, it's important to note this would actually go after the meter for us, so they, they wouldn't necessarily be correct, connecting directly here. They would have to actually come to our interconnect, which is by our city shop, but. Um, there is a, uh, pretty nice, uh, easement that runs through here. It's the old railroad right away, so we have opportunity there. Um, this property is really not gonna be used for anything else. I don't know if we're gonna ever develop next to the lagoons. I don't think that would be a wise decision. Um, there's also the issue of, you know, this property here, uh, of course, the industrial parks right here, but. Um, this property, seventy percent of this lot is in floodplain. Um, and a small section of this lot is in floodplain too, but that's not an issue for the solar project. It's just an issue for. You know, development. If someone was to come in there, you know, for to hypothetically land another major industrial person, they really wouldn't want to probably develop that piece of property. Um, so as far as neighbors go, there's really not anybody. It's kind of a fact from a neighbor perspective. Uh, again, it takes about six to seven acres, I think is what the, the total site was for one megawatt. Um, we are peak, peak capacity for our, our peak uses is about one and a half megawatts. And so this actually sneaks in underneath the K P or the, uh, S P P threshold for the queue, the interconnect queue. Uh, so that means you can do this project without having to wait the four or five years to get it approved by S P P, so. Uh, that's major bonus with that. Uh, as far as, let's.
I think one other advantage I see here is you could go north if you ever wanted to build onto it.
Yeah.
While still.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you got.
The land that you have.
Plenty of room right here. Uh, you would, you would eventually run into.
Right, but you could do another megawatt. Looks like another seven acres there.
Pretty easily if you wanted to. Yeah, so it's a. I think this is probably the most ideal spot. We control it. It's probably never gonna be developed in anything else. Um, kind of makes sense for us, I think.
Is that, um? Railroad right away, is that kind of used as a road right now?
Yeah.
Is that where they access? Is that where they access?
Yeah, that's how we access, um, the wastewater, wastewater lagoons. Uh, the only potential issue with that is it is held by the trail conservancy, so they could, you could theoretically have a trail extension that goes through there at some point. Uh, but you still have utility easements that run all the way through that, so you wouldn't have to, you wouldn't be arguing about.
Even if, even if they made a trail, it'd be fine.
Yeah, it'd be fine. It wouldn't interfere with the solar panel at all.
This, this property would be, uh, would be gravelled and, uh, and fenced. So it would not be something that people could be getting into.
Yeah, it wouldn't be.
And it's low maintenance as well. There's not gonna be a lot of mowing or anything like that.
Said there was a portion of it in the floodplain. I'm, I'm sure that I wouldn't want to walk in water, thing with electricity.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, they can build that up and use, they can basically bridge that with rock and.
Okay.
Build that up, that side up. Uh, one of the things they're gonna be doing with this next phase is a feasibility study. And so they'll take a look at the actual site and say, okay, well, you know, we don't want to be through that piece, but maybe we can work, wrap around it. Or we can work around it. Obviously, we still have another twenty-six and a half acres there we could work with if we had to negotiate that around. Um.
So, uh, in your assessment, um, even though we don't own it or won't own it, it'll still affect. Or reduce our power cost. Do you know, like, how much or does it just depend on?
Uh, well, it's gonna depend. Um, I think that a lot of that's kind of to be determined. Um, it reduces the overall cost for the pool for sure, as a pool-owned asset. Uh, we're in the situation where the walnut, walnut, uh, energy center isn't gonna be coming online until twenty twenty-six or twenty-seven. Um, and so we have this situation where we're, we may end up with not enough capacity that we have to buy some capacity. Uh, and if you do that, it's essentially paper capacity and you don't own any of the assets. You're just paying. A premium to have that in your portfolio, but if you install this asset and you do this in multiple cities. We can count that capacity and then we own that, so it actually ends up being a cheaper, cheaper route than, you know, adding. Paper capacity is what you call it. So at the end of the day, it's gonna be something that's gonna reduce the cost for the overall pool, which definitely reduces the cost for us.
Right.
Yeah, it's hard to say how much.
Right, and I feared.
Yeah. So the, the good parts, kind of the key points for us on this, uh, there's no project cost for the city. It's K P P owned. Um, the only thing that we're really losing out on is farm rent, uh, which is four hundred bucks a year, so. I think that's a pretty nominal, nominal amount, not, not really anything to worry about. Um, I think we'll make that back and more in savings to the city, uh, through electrical. Uh, projected lifespan is about thirty years, although they will continue to reduce energy after that. They kind of degrade. And so they can't guarantee the same capacity after that time. Um, what will most likely end up happening is it's a K P P asset, so it will be rehabbed throughout the course of life of that. And still continue to, to produce power even down the road, so. Um, from that perspective, it's, it's, I think, a pretty good deal for us. There's really no out-the-door cost at all. Uh, there will be a little bit of cost as far as rezoning this. This property will have to get, well, yeah, it'll have to be rezoned, at least that portion of it. Uh, what K P P is proposing is an easement on that property, so we actually still retain ownership of the property. It's just an easement for this. For the solar installation, so. Um, again, it'll reduce our power costs, so that'll be something, um, if you want to get into more about kind of the ins and outs of the Southwest Power Pool. And how that works, I'd be more than happy to, but it's really complicated, so, um, happy to do it though if you want to. Um, and then this property right now is mostly unusable. I kind of mentioned that too, so it's one of those things that. We're probably never, ever gonna develop that for any kind of anything really, other than, you know, we bought it to expand the lagoon cell.
They, they include the connection cost into the project cost?
All that is included in the, to the, to the grant. Um, it would be a twenty percent forgiveness on the grant, uh, and there's some tax credits attached to it too. So it actually ends up making this a pretty affordable, attractive project for K P P. Uh, there's nine other cities, I think, in this grant, so it's kind of a whole package grant. Uh, thirty-five million.
Each, each with the one with.
No, it depends.
Larger communities are, are gonna, there's up to five mega, there's one, it could be up to five megawatts, but that's the max.
Maybe based.
Any individual.
Based on the side of the city.
And their minimum peak load.
Yep, so, um, what K P P is asking is are we, are we in to continue into this process? Um, it's not a guaranteed deal. The next piece would be that they'll complete their application and it'll move into the feasibility study. Uh, there'll be lots of little decision points that we'll have to make along the way, um, but right now, we're basically all we're asking for is, is this something we want to continue doing? Um, I feel pretty, pretty good that the, the benefits of this project, should it come to fruition, will outweigh any of the costs. And, uh, I would highly recommend that we move forward with it, um. I don't know. If you have any questions about anything regarding the technical piece of it, I can try to answer some of those things, but. Um, if you really had a lot of technical questions, we bring James from K P P in to, to kind of explain that stuff for you.
And what we need is a motion to move forward on the proposal? Is that what it is?
So, so what they're asking for is intent to participate. And there's a document in your packet that, uh, says we either accept or decline the invitation. And we described the location address and the acreage available and the conditions, as, as Matt said, they're, you know. Regarding floodplain, those kind of things, put that in there. And then, uh, then they're asking that, uh, the mayor affirm that the information provided reflects the action taken by the city's governing body. To designate the intention and conditions, if any, to participate in a K P P energy solar project, so. I guess I should step back and say, conditions, meaning, do you, does this, would the city have any conditions of beyond? The fact that it's not gonna cost us anything, you know, that we would want from K P P and, and. I'd be hard pressed to think of.
I'd be mildly concerned, but be just, if that's gonna cost us anything, if it's not, if it's gonna help us, then.
Yeah, I think that location is hidden and out of the way. I don't think anybody's gonna gripe about it being an eyesore. Right, they've had trouble with other groups doing that.
It certainly, uh, helps us, you know, in, in terms of, uh, and I don't know how much, uh, uh, that, uh, means to, to your business. But if you have customers that say, we want, you know, we want to see some, some movement into renewables. You know, it definitely gives us a, a footprint in that renewable space that we don't have currently.
That's the whole positives. But you need a motion?
We need a motion.
Some, some moved.
All right.
I'll second it.
So Councilman Driggers moves. Councilman by seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item up is consideration of the purchase of water treatment chemicals.
Thank you, sir. This is always a fun one. Uh, we spent quite a bit on chemicals, as you all know. Um, so what we have here is kind of the last order for the year, hopefully. Um, for our chemicals, you know, in large volumes that we do buy, um, technically, a lot of these, we could have, we've. Could have approved the purchase without bringing to the city council, but I just sort of grouped them all together because they came out all at once, so that we can kind of look at what that is. Um, so we have twenty-five thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars fifty-eight cents there. Um, overall for the year, we're at a hundred and fifty-five thousand three ninety-nine ninety-seven, which is over budget for chemicals. We missed that by about four percent, um. It's, it's been tough to kind of figure what, what that is, and with the pilot project, um. We're still trying to figure out kind of what that chemical mix is gonna end up being. Uh, we'll say that any of the chemicals we use in the pilot project have been paid by Katie and G up until this point. Uh, but that will change at the end of the year, I think, um, once we kind of shift gears into the next phase of that. Um, as far as the pilot project goes, it's kind of an update there, is that's going, that's going fairly well. I think we're having an issue with dialing in exactly when we need to feed the chemicals and how much.
Right.
Um, we actually have a group of luminologists, which are people who study algae. Uh, they are, uh, providing us, they're developing a model for, a predictive model for the reservoir. Uh, it's, it's kind of determining when we should expect flow of algae toxin. Um, and so we're hopeful that that will help us kind of zero in on some of what that chemical looks like. Because as we've been doing it this year, we've had to kind of go full steam a lot of the time, not really knowing what we needed to do. Um, and so it's, it's been kind of a learning curve and a learning process, so. Uh, part of that has contributed to the chemical cost being over for this year. Um, but then again, chemical costs have increased significantly too. Um, some of those over the last three years, you know, gone from anywhere from ten to forty percent increase in those chemical costs, so. Uh, pretty significant, but, uh, as far as this particular purchase, uh, we really need to, to approve that. We need to continue water production. I think everybody would agree with that, but. Uh, I wanted to make sure that you, you gotta look at that, because it is over, uh, collectively, it is over the, uh, purchasing, purchasing policy. For what we can approve administratively, so, uh, that's why it's being presented to you, uh, to answer any questions. If you have any kind of questions about anything in particular, I'm not a water chemist, but I can. Fake it till I make it on that part. Didn't do well in chemistry. That's not my subject.
You mentioned the fact that the cost of chemicals has gone up. Do we have any idea in terms of not cost, but volume of chemicals, whether that's been flat or more? Or less than last year?
I would say you're not going back and counting everything. It's, it hasn't appeared to be terribly much more, uh, if not, if not a little less.
So, so maybe it's, it's just more accounted for inflationary.
Yeah.
A pressure on the chemicals.
Well, and you know, it's hard, this year is a little bit more difficult to determine because we have that pilot. Program that's going in there, so there's chemicals aside from what we're normally using that are affecting those chemicals that we normally use, so. Um, pretty difficult to tell, but I think, you know, we're probably wrapped around, but inflationary cost is probably the biggest determinant.
Questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the purchase of water treatment chemicals totaling twenty-five thousand one hundred sixty-eight dollars fifty-eight cents.
That's some move.
Councilman Lowen moves. Is there a second? Councilman by seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is item four, consideration of a haying agreement at the airport.
Sure. Uh, so the proposed hang agreement, we got about sixteen acres at the airport that have normally been hayed, um, or harvested for hay. Maybe a better way to say it, uh, by a farmer and we haven't had a real, we've never had a formal agreement on that. It's just sort of been. Whoever, whoever came in, we had kind of a longstanding relationship with somebody, but no real formal agreement and that person hasn't been doing it, so. Uh, we've had a couple people interested, uh, David Lowen has come in and, and asked about it multiple times. And so I guess persistence has paid off in this, this case, because he's willing to, uh, enter an agreement with us. And it's David Lowen, the son, not David Lowen, the council member. Uh, so it's important to note that, but, uh. What we did, you know, and, and rather than just kind of going loosey-goosey with no agreement on it, we've decided to put this agreement together. Um, we don't really receive any, we don't receive any, uh, compensation for the hay, we're just, it's a service to us because we don't have to maintain it. Um, one of the things we did want to make sure that we did and had issues in the past is with, um, the farmer who does that. Leaving bales there for an extended period of time or leaving equipment and possibly leaving equipment too close to the runway, which is a big no-no for the F A A. Um, so we've got that all clarified and set out into the terms of this agreement. Uh, you'd have to, they could, farmer could do it twice a year and they've got to remain three hundred feet off the runway, uh, as per F A A. Um, just one of those things we want to address and just kind of put it into a formal agreement. Uh, we did not do a formal bidding process on this, so if you wanted to step back and do that, we could do that. Um, I don't know that there's a ton of people lining up to do this, but, um. You know, I think, I, I feel like Mr. Lowen's request is reasonable and, uh, can just kind of go forward with that. Unless, unless you have heartburn with that, um. We don't really receive any financial benefit, other than we get to, still have to maintain the property, so. That's, that's kind of what we're proposing, uh, with this agreement. Again, if you wanted to step back and do a more formal process, you absolutely could do that, but. Uh, I don't, I don't know that that's a huge issue in this case.
All right, any questions? I'm assuming that we're talking about next year, because I imagine it's too late to get any value of hay off there now.
Try to do something now. Try to do something now, but we'll see.
I'm not an agronomist, so I don't know what the nutritional value of the.
It's not as good, no.
Would be, but.
Then he'll do it anyway.
Okay. Any other questions?
They're gonna hang it right now.
Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to, uh, uh, approve the haying agreement with Mr. David Lowen. And, uh, and, uh, move forward with that, then authorize the mayor to sign. Councilman Driggers moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstain?
Abstain.
No, uh, uh.
Aye.
Yeah, I got it, okay, motion carries, thank you. Uh, we now have Hillsborough Ford invoices totaling four thousand, twenty dollars, eighteen cents. Mr. Stiles?
Thank you, sir, got a lot of police vehicles in here, uh, some engine mounts, a couple belts, tensioners. I think it's the basic maintenance, too, for the electrical apartment. There are, I think, four or five invoices total on there, so uh, grand total on that one is four thousand dollars. I got the right number, four thousand, twenty, eighteen.
There's no cabin air filters.
No cabin air filters.
Dodged a bullet there. Okay. What can I say, I'm the one that said yes, so only got myself to blame. Nobody's easy, more easily upsold than a salesman.
That's fair.
I'm sorry, we're off, we're off, way off topic here, so, uh, any questions regarding these invoices? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to authorize the, uh, payment of the Hillsborough Ford invoices totaling forty-four thousand, twenty dollars, eighteen cents.
So moved.
Councilman Driggers moves, is there a second?
Okay.
McCarty, on the quick second, nice. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstain?
Abstain.
Okay. Uh, the motion is approved and those invoices will be paid. And now we have a couple of last, uh, minute additions to our agenda tonight. And the first one up is consideration of quotes for repair of Ash Street and Pedestrian Corner at Ash and Grand Avenue, Mr. Stiles.
Thank you, sir, so we were kind of waiting on this one, sorry for being late into the packet, we were hoping that we'd, uh, get a revised quote from the votes Parga. They didn't, they did not come through with that, so we're, we're moving forward with what we have. Um, so what we have here is, this, this is a project we've been kind of looking at for a while, uh, we get a lot of complaints about it. This, this particular piece, I'll share that for everybody so you can see that. Uh, this area right here, this, uh, fairly, fairly significant bump, there's some concrete heaving right there, where those two things come together. And sprawled out, and it, it, it's for a rough ride on probably one of our higher traveled streets, well, is one of our higher traveled streets. Um, and so there's a couple sections in there that need to be removed, um, so what we did was ask, uh, votes Parga, we, we had the intention of this not being an under, or under, over a twenty-five thousand dollar project, because it didn't, didn't match kind of what we were seeing estimate wise. Uh, so we asked votes Parga, who does a lot of work for us, and then we had Heck Construction also bid the project. Uh, Heck came in significantly lower than votes Parga. Uh, the note there, though, is that it's an eight inch versus a ten inch pavement, um. Eight inch versus ten inch in this situation on this street with that traffic is really not that significant. Uh, we were trying to get votes to do a, a, an equivalent quote there, so that they could see, we could see apples to apples, what that looks like, eight inch to eight inch, but how can I get that back in time, so? Again, we move forward with that, and then, uh, while we were looking at it, uh, actually while they were out on site getting, walking through the estimates, they, they moved on to this corner here on Grand and Ash, which is in pretty rough shape, I mean, it's one of our higher traveled pedestrian areas, and it is, it is not A D A compliant right now. Uh, busted out, pretty sprawled out, um, it's been kind of a topic of conversation, uh, internally at least, about what we should do to improve that, because it is in, in pretty rough shape, so we've had them provide a quote for that as an alternate to that. Uh, so you got a kind of a, a twofer on there.
What caused that damage?
I think that one's just time, just, just time, it hasn't, it hasn't really. The other one is heaving, which you don't normally see that level of concrete heaving, so we have squirrely base around here, it's just a mess in a lot of different areas. Uh, so you got some fatty clay, uh, particularly in this area of town, which causes some extraordinary heaving of concrete. Um, we've seen, if you go two streets over, uh, you, you've got curb area that is completely heaved up, and it's higher than the crown of the road, which is highly unusual, that doesn't not happen. Uh, it's just subgrade, it's not good there, so uh, that's what caused that, but as far as the other, I don't think it's anything more than just time and, time pressure, basically.
I think a lot of it too is when people are turning, uh, when you're turning right and going north, people are getting so far over to that curb. I've seen some people not hit it, but get pretty darn close to it. But.
So, yeah, it's a, it's, it's a bad, bad section, if you go take a look at it, you can tell just from the aerials that it's, it's pretty rough, but um, so what we had, votes Parker quoted us forty-one thousand, two twenty to complete Ash Street and eighty-four, sixty-five for the sidewalk work. Um, I honestly think that this is too small of a project for them, um. It, it would be kind of a fill-in project, and to mobilize them, it's, it's probably just too expensive and probably not really worth their time, to be right honest. Um, was happy to have them come out, they do good work, they've done a lot of work for us, um, but Heck Construction came in at twenty-nine thousand, uh, or twenty-two thousand, five sixty-nine, seventy-six for the Ash Street repair, and sixty-seven hundred on the sidewalk, so total for that was twenty-nine thousand, two sixty-nine, seventy-six, so it's, you know, uh, twenty thousand dollars less than votes Parga. Uh, I think they're, you know, much smaller company, had some smaller company local. Uh, do good work, too, they've done a lot of work out in the industrial park area.
All they did, the Grand Street, uh, concrete for us.
So, got good experience with both these contractors, I think Heck will do a decent job with this, I don't have any, I don't have any reservations with that. As far as kind of the payment for this, the Special Highway Fund will take care of that. Special Highway is used for road maintenance and infrastructure, uh, related to roads, it's, it's tied to the gas tax, so we get regular infusions of cash from the state, transfers from the state for that. Uh, right now, we have sixty thousand in there, we've got budget capacity, uh, or approved budget authority, I should say, for those repairs, too. Uh, we were talking about doing this project earlier in the year, actually before we did the ceiling downtown. Uh, we just decided that the ceiling project was probably more important, and so we moved that one to the head of the line. Uh, this is, which, we're gonna try to get this one invoated at the end of the year, so. Uh, so what we're looking for on this is, uh, approval, if you're, if you're willing to do it, um, for Heck Construction's bid. For a total of twenty-nine thousand, two sixty-nine, seventy-six.
Questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to, uh, approve the bid of Heck Construction, uh, in the amount of, uh, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars, seventy-six cents for both the, uh, concrete heaving across Ash Street and also the corner curb repairs, uh, to, to bring it back to A D A compliance on the corner of Grand and Ash. Somebody care to make that motion? Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second?
Second, go ahead.
Councilman Lowen, seconds, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next, and last business item is consideration of a request to place one point five million in a short-term C D with Central National Bank.
Sure, the last meeting, we approved moving, uh, one point five to the municipal investment pool. Uh, part of that process, once you kind of get into that, is to, to recheck with local banks, to make sure that they uh, aren't, they, they prefer to use the municipal investment pool, and prefer you to use a local bank if possible. Uh, and so we did, we talked, went back out and talked to our local banks, and lo and behold, the C M B, once they understood that we were talking about moving a hundred, a one point five million, decided that they were going to do a match on the rate for the municipal investment pool for a thirty-day note, uh, on this, it should say note, a C D. Um, so that's the exact same terms that we were getting with municipal investment pool, um, stays with Central National Bank, uh, which is easier for us administratively, uh, to keep track of. Um, no real lost opportunity on interest income. Uh, we just wanted to say, hey, we're not, we're not gonna use that, that you approved with the municipal investment pool, but we'd rather take it to, uh, C M B for, for this, uh, short-term C D. Uh, we'll continue to kind of roll that C D as necessary, um. It sounds like they're willing to match the municipal investment pool rate every time we roll it, so uh, that's what we're looking to do there, um, and rather than the municipal investment pools.
To keep it local.
Yeah, it keeps it at Central National Bank, which is, is a good thing, um. Yeah, so what we're doing, and, you know, last time we saw, sought authorization, we don't like to move one point five million dollars around without approval. Um, and so this is what we're doing here, too, we're asking for approval to, to move this and Central National Bank into a C D, rather than just keeping it in a regular checking.
Any questions? Well, I, I appreciate Central National being willing to participate, and, uh, seems like a good deal for everybody, so somebody would care to make a motion to, uh, place one point five million in of, uh, idle funds in a short-term C D with Central National Bank? Councilman McCarty moves, is there a second? Councilman by seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last is, uh, our discussion item, we have, uh, water and sewer rates.
Not every day you get to move one of that.
Yeah.
It's not in cash either.
So, Mr. Stiles?
Yes, sir, uh, water and sewer rates, so what we, we talked about last time, we, uh, we did a rate change, as that we bring, we review these every year in November, and so it's November, and here we are looking at, uh, everything. We took a look at all the rates, water, water and sewer are the ones that kind of jumped out as something that we maybe need to address. Uh, the electric rate, electrical rate and trash rate are totally fine, those are doing well. Uh, the water rate, you know, continues to, the, the cost of doing water, or doing business in water, it continues to go, uh, um. You know, when we approved our rate, with our contract with, uh, the Water Office, it went from fifteen thousand dollars to the market rate, which was about seventy thousand, six, sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-four percent increase, um. And I will remind you that that was not a negotiation, that was basically, we got told, if you want the water, that's what it's gonna be. Um, and so every year now, they have the opportunity to adjust that. Um, and it's been adjusting, um, four and a half percent, or four point six percent last, the first year, and then another four this year, so that raw water cost is now up to four, uh, forty-nine, forty-nine, three, uh, per thousand gallons, so uh, pretty significant as far as, you know, what that is, and then we have to, now we have to pay for the additional capacity that we don't use as well, and so that's tied to, uh, actually the municipal investment pool rate, so uh, that's running at about five percent, a little less than five percent, so uh, we have to pay a portion of our money, basically, our, our capacity at the same rate that they would get in interest if they were to invest that money, it's kind of a strange way they've got that set up, but, uh, I, I, it's just what it is, so uh, we looked at that, we ran those numbers in, uh, then we looked at the cost of production, uh, to produce the water, so we're looking, we're, we're looking at, I think, a fifty, fifty-three per, fifty-three cent per thousand gallon rate to kind of keep up with the cost for next year. Uh, if everything kind of keeps in the trajectory, we are. It's a little bit difficult to kind of figure out what that ends up being, because we do have this pilot study, and we're not a hundred percent sure what the end result of that's gonna look like. Uh, that's Morgan and I's best guess as to what it is, based on what we can predict into the future for next year, so um, fifty-three cents per thousand gallons, that would move our current cost is six dollars and five cents per thousand gallons, so it'd go up to six, uh, six dollars and fifty-eight cents uh, per thousand gallons, if we were to kind of look at what we think that's gonna be. Uh, the fixed rate is, is really tied to kind of the debt service and sort of the fixed costs, and that's twenty-nine dollars per month, that's what you pay, no matter what, if you gotta hook up or not, or whatever you use. Uh, it's twenty-nine dollars, so uh, so that, that doesn't need to change, that, that, those costs haven't really changed that much. Um, so that's sort of what we're looking at, um, the other piece of the puzzle, anytime we do water rates, is that we have to look at the Peabody Agreement. Uh, we haven't, we hadn't changed that one for many, many years, until we, uh, got into the new water contract, and so we, we made that adjustment, at the same time we adjusted the rates for our, our in-town residents. Um, so I would suggest, if we're gonna make a change for in-town, that we look at the, uh, change for Peabody as well. And that, that same production cost is the same for them as it is for us. Um, so that, that would move from three twenty-one per thousand gallons, uh, for the first fifty, uh, to three seventy-eight. Um, and then afterwards, so the thing with Peabody's contract is they have fifty million do, or fifty million gallon allotment from the Kansas Water Office, like we have with ours, versus three hundred. Um, once they surpass that, they get into buying water directly out of our allocation, so that price goes up to match the cost of the water that we have to provide, so that's why that's different, after fifty million. We've only crossed fifty million gallons one time that we can find in the record, so, um, not like it happens a lot. And they've got some interesting requirements for notifications, so when we, if, if you were to make a change with this, and then we're gonna change Peabody as well, uh, we would have a little bit of a, of different, uh, implementation with them, because we have to do some notifications. Uh, so that's the water rate. Uh, the sewer rate, we haven't adjusted those since fourteen, two thousand and fourteen, um, and during that time, we've had over thirty percent inflation. Um, and we have, you know, that has built up a, a significant amount of, uh, reserve, which we have used the last, this year, uh, for lining projects, and so we've, we've kind of purchased that down, four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars worth of lining projects this year. Uh, and as we've stepped up our maintenance, we know we're gonna have more maintenance costs associated with that, because honestly, it had not been I wouldn't say well taken care, i- it had been sort of ignored in some of the maintenance areas that needed to be addressed. Um, and so now we've got some issues with, uh, the capital cost, lift stations in particular, uh, that we know we're gonna have to replace, we actually just replaced a volute and, uh, out, out at the industrial lift station today. Uh, which is not an easy fix, and it's not a, not a cheap fix either, so uh, we're gonna be in a situation where we're gonna be needing to make more cap, capital investments there, um. Right now, our users pay three ninety-eight per thousand gallons, um, so we're looking at maybe doing an adjustment on that. Um, on the consumption fee, you know, we could, we, we talked about changing that, um. Well, with the estimate we had on there was a dollar, so four, four dollars and thirty-eight cents per thousand gallons, um. That'd be about fifty thousand dollars additional a year, uh, for the sewer fund, based on kind of how it's used. Um, and so we think we, that would be about the right amount of money that we would need to start investing into those lift stations and some of those other things with regard to, uh, just the, the overall maintenance of that system, so uh, that's what we would be looking at for that, um. Those, again, are things that are subject to however you feel about that, uh, you know, as far as that goes. The sewer one isn't quite as firm as a calculation as, as the water one, we know that one pretty well. Um, and the rates are set up, just so we kind of know what the rates are set up, we have really basic rates in the City Hills, bro, there's no differentiation between commercial or residential when it comes to water and sewer. Uh, there's no tiers either, so it's just a flat rate, it's, you pay the base charge, you pay this amount. That's what it is, uh, real simple, real easy to follow. Um, so we find that, that's great for us, we like that in, in, in the office, but uh, there are a hundred other ways you could split that rate, so if you wanted to split it into a commercial rate and do something different for commercial people versus residential people, you could do that. Um, a lot of systems for water have, uh, conservation tiers, which means that as you buy more water, it gets more expensive, um, and the idea there is to conserve the water supply, um, that it makes it uh, it, it puts a, an economic pressure to, to not consume as much water. Um, and that's, when you talk about water in Kansas, that's a, a pretty big deal, because the, the future for water in Kansas is not great. Uh, we're in a pretty good position, because we have surface water with the Marion Reservoir. We've got a pretty good, we've got a thirty-year deal, we're gonna be good, uh, we'll be in good shape, um, places out west are not in as good a shape, so what can end up happening is policies that's designed to help them can impact us, um. There has been talk, at least in the past, about, you know, if you're gonna take wa, or take money from the state, if you get a loan, you get you know, revolving loan fund, or, or a grant from K D T for something, that they can insist that you put in a conservation tier. I don't know what that actually looks like at the end of the day, um, but it's something to think about potentially in the future. Um, so you know, I, I guess the, the moral of the story there is that the rates can be structured however you feel you want to structure that. Um, you know, we, we've got a recommendation as far as what we think the rates need to be, or what that needs to generate. Uh, but if you wanted to structure it differently, that would be something we could do. Well, with, what we've got sort of proposed here, uh, it would end up costing the average, kind of the high-end residential user, they use about fifty-seven, uh, fifty-seven hundred gallons water and sewer. Uh, it'd cost about sixty-six dollars a year, based on this rate change there, so, you know, it's not a ton. You know, it's not a ton, uh, but it is, you know, it could still be significant for people. So. Um, if you wanna look at changing the rate structure, we could do that. Uh, we're just putting this out there as it's kind of the first blush, trying to get some feedback from you as to kind of what you wanna do with it.
Questions? Comments?
It was me, your your rates are well thought out and you have. Have it, or you have. Results backing what you're trying to do here and.
Yeah, we're not really trying to.
Right.
You know, push people for no good reason.
Right.
I think we want to avoid getting in a situation where we had. Last time we had to do a rate change for water anyway, it was pretty significant. I mean, it was pretty large. Um. I don't think people like getting the huge, huge increase, even though it took, you know, seven years to get there. Uh, you know, taking a more measured approach, doing smaller increases regularly, I think is probably better.
So, as Matt says, we go to league meetings and and other meetings, you know, where water is is a is a very big topic and uh. As as you know, we we've reaped the benefit for what, thirty five years on that last.
Forty years.
Forty years on the last contract. And uh, the one thing that the state of Kansas learned is they'll never do that again. So that the those 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 kind of fixed rate contracts are are history. And uh, you know, they've also realized it. Like, uh, I I kind of call it the toll road approach, you know? Oh, we'll we'll put a toll on this road until it's paid for. Well. Remarkably, it never gets paid for. You know, and the tolls don't seem to go down ever. They, you know, it just goes up. So, you know, it's something we're gonna have to face. We've also seen some pressure on our surface water supply from from uh, from the state vis a vis uh, Wolf Creek. You know, wanting to place a demand on on a portion of the surface water at at Marion Reservoir. Be sent downstream to uh, back up the uh, Wolf Creek. Water supply. So, you know, water is, we're just gonna be something that's gonna continue to be in the forefront and. For those of us that are old enough to remember our old water, well water system, you know? The system we have, even with the cost of chemicals, this water is so much more improved than uh, than what we grew up with that, uh. You know, I'd hate to, I'd hate to step backwards and be thinking about trying to go back to some groundwater supply again that's. Being depleted, you know, so at least with the surface water, that's more of a renewable water resource than uh, than we have. So. Anyway, it's something to think about. Uh, is there any direction that uh? Councilman Dragers, you felt like we were headed in the right direction? Is there anybody else that uh, thinks we need to take a different approach? Before he brings it back to us for action at a future meeting?
Well, for me.
Okay.
You like the rate the way it is. It's it's simple, which is, I think everybody likes that. Um.
Yeah, I think the simpler it is, it keeps the customers happier too. They understand it tend to.
Uh, it's easier to explain for sure.
I think, you know, the day may come when a conservation rate may have to come into play, but uh, I don't think we're there yet. But but that doesn't, you know, the rate structure we have doesn't preclude adding that, and that wouldn't, I don't think, be that difficult.
It wouldn't.
To to put that in if it had, if we had to later on.
Um, just, I don't, I'm to read the tea leaves, you may at some point be forced to do that.
Right.
But. Don't have to at this point.
Do we have an any idea? I mean, what? We don't have a, I guess what I would call an extremely water-heavy industry in town. I mean, we have our schools, those are Tabor and and U S D four ten probably are our biggest, biggest water users, I would imagine.
Tabor, by.
Yeah.
By a long ways.
Right.
Yeah. They would be the biggest one.
Sure. But along with everybody else, I mean, conservation methods, you know, in the future would continue to adapt us to helping us use less water and.
Right.
But anything that that's uh, good for residential, I would think would be good for residential dormitories and those kind of things. So. All right. Any other direction, comments, questions? Okay, you good with uh, with that direction?
Move forward with that.
Okay. All right, I guess we're up uh, to your city administrators report. So carry on.
Sure. Uh, first thing, wanna draw your attention to our new podium. Pretty fancy. It is on loan from the permanent collection of the Hillsborough Museum. That is the Steinrich M B Church in Peabody, Kansas. It was a uh, a plant church from Abenfeld. Um, this is from nineteen sixty five. It was acquired and it was one of the pieces that we uh, did not include in the uh, museum auction, even though we have. Five or six other pulpits that we've inherited over the years. Uh, that one's got a lot of character. That was probably the best looking one, and it's actually been, believe it or not, restored a little bit too. We had to kind of put some pieces back together. So. Thanks to Kara at the museum for doing that. Looks pretty good. Uh, it's a huge improvement over what we had. So. So that's the first thing there. Uh, housing conversation. So that's our, you know, our next kind of big lift as far as our strategic plan. We've had a lot of conversations about housing in the last two weeks. Um, several more than I would have thought. And so we've got a couple of projects I think are gonna be coming up for you guys to consider. We've got a a housing organization that wants to do some units. Um, got a private person who wants to do some units. We're talking at the end of the week with business community about maybe a project as well. So. Um, just gonna keep moving on that. It's a big push. Uh, it's uh, not a great time to be building housing right now, but I think it's 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 our, probably our biggest need. We've got childcare. Kind of in the in line, and now that's the next thing we're gonna straight, start pushing on. So. That's been going well. I've been real, real pleased with how those conversations have been moving forward. Uh, K P P rate form, we had that at the end of last week. Uh, kept one there. Budget is increasing twenty and twenty four, five million dollars for a debt service contingency fund uh, for K P P. Uh, even with that, it's gonna, we're we're we are expecting a little bit of an increase from K P P to one, one dollar eighty eight cents per megawatt hour. Um, but it's also, you know, the second lowest year since two thousand fourteen, I think is what they said. So. Three percent's pretty minimal, still very low for us. Um, so we're we're pretty happy with that. Um, they're doing a great job over at K P P, keeping keeping that uh, cost down and and managing our portfolio. I'm always amazed that how they do that and kind of how they make that happen for us. So. Uh, aside from the solar project, I think that another reason why we're benefiting from our K P P membership.
It is, it is interesting as you look at uh, at the different uh, uh, pieces of generation that make up our port- portfolio and. And we don't as yet have any solar in our portfolio, but uh, obviously, we've talked about that earlier, but. The wind piece is 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 amazing to me because when the wind blows, all the turbines want to run, right? And then so the cost drops so drastically when the wind's blowing that. You can get to a point where you're actually paying people to take that energy. And that's just not a good place to be, you know? We wanna generate, but we don't wanna get to where we're just giving it away or or even paying for it. So. Managing that, those assets in terms of curtailing their their output is is quite a, quite a tricky business and. And my hats off to our folks at at K P P for how they manage that so that we don't. End up paying, you know, for something that we're not getting, if you will.
Yep, for sure. They do an awesome job. So. Uh, Flint Hills Regional Council, Mayor and I went to the Flint, Flint Hills Regional Council meeting on October twenty at Fort Riley. Uh, really interesting meeting, really interesting to talk about the economic impact of Fort Riley. You don't really think about all the things it does, but it's. And pretty impressive. Um, and so they're, they've been very welcoming to us and they've included us in their latest grant application to the E P A. And so. Uh, we're not officially members, but they're really interested in having us very welcoming to do that. And hopefully we'll have the interim director here at the next meeting to kind of talk about that. Uh, it's a really good bargain, I think, for us too. It's less than twenty five hundred dollars for us to join that. Um, and I think we'd get a tremendous return on our investment. So. Uh, looking forward to that and I hope that'll be a a positive move in the future. Uh, airport, you may notice we got a new roof there. She's got that fixed. Um. We're gonna have a discussion about the airport though, the future. Uh, we're gathering some data about it now. I mean, that thing, it. I I wish we had a real clear path forward with it. Uh, we subsidize the heck out of it. Uh, it doesn't get a ton of usage, so we're, we're gonna need to figure out something with that. And I've I've got a few ideas, but like I say, we're gathering some data on it. Uh, I think we're just gonna have to have a a conversation about what that looks like in the future. Uh, girl's volleyball championship, that's awesome. We've got another one. I didn't think that the. Home of champions sign would fill up quite as fast as it has, but that's an awesome problem to have. Um, so yeah, they'll be here on the twenty first to get their back-to-back state championship proclamation. Very exciting there. Looking forward to that. Uh, wages and public works, uh, we're kind of prepping some of that. We're doing, gathering some data on wage, uh, particularly with our public works people, water, sewer, electric, you know, is way out of whack. Um, and so part of that research, we're we're gonna bring some of that to you too, to talk about what that looks like and what we kind of need to be doing. Uh, to maintain our our workforce. We are in a great spot with them right now. I wanna keep them. Um, but we gotta, we gotta make a few changes as far as how we're paying them, uh, because we're not really hitting the mark on that. So. Uh, another big announcement, happy to have the Cal Ripken Baseball Ten U State Tournament coming to town in July next year. That's a big deal. Um, that's the top league for T- Ten U baseball. Um. Over a thousand people are gonna be in town for that. That's the teams and the visitors, players, coaches. It's gonna be awesome. Um, Jerry at the rack is looking at maybe expanding our offerings during that week to offer some clinics and maybe tie in with Tabor and have some onsite stuff. So. Uh, real exciting opportunity, I think there. It's gonna be really good.
Ten years old isn't too young for Tabor to recruit.
Yeah, right. They get in there in ten U, right? You know? I think they're excited. Yeah, we'll see. I don't know. We'll see. Yeah. Uh, it's gonna be a big event. So we're we're awesome. It's it's awesome that we were able to secure that. Uh, we're gonna have a ceremony, I think, Thursday uh, to sign the, sign the deal on that one. So it's gonna be a big deal for the community, more on that as it comes up, but. Uh, we're hoping that leads to some future tournaments and and more growth there. So. Uh, job fair, we had.
On that, yeah.
What's that?
Dates on that, yeah.
Uh, just July. I don't have the firm dates on it yet. But there's gonna be a need for a lot of help, I think. So we're gonna.
Probably snow comes.
There we go.
Yeah.
You're not sure. Yeah, I have to make extras.
Yeah. Uh, I had a job fair with core communities the last uh, on the twenty eighth. Uh, did not go great. Um, we had some employers back out at the last minute. Um, attendance from job seekers wasn't great. The weather was kind of crappy. I think that was probably the biggest thing, but. Uh, we we advertised it very heavily throughout the county. Um, but we're gonna rethink that. If we're gonna do another job fair, we're gonna rethink how that works because it just wasn't. It didn't feel like it was kind of, it wasn't really worth it for the people. I got to talk to several people, um, several, I mean, half a dozen, three that were actually serious. Um, so, you know, I I don't know that that was real productive for our people who were there. So. Uh, if we're gonna do it in the future, we're gonna talk about kind of revamping that. So. Um, statement of municipal policy, one of the things, the mayor and I went to the regional K league, uh, regional meetings. Uh, one of the things that we took out of that was that maybe we should consider adopting our own legislative policy statement. Um, you know, the league has one. It's a booklet. It's got, I don't know, fifty points in it. Uh, but I think it might be positive or a good direction or something that we should maybe look at identifying three, three to five things that are our priorities um, as we move into the legislative session. Uh, so that when we talk to our legislators, we can articulate that a little clearer. Uh, we've got awesome relationships, I think, with everybody we have now. Um. Our new Senator, Senator Fag, I don't, we don't have a great relationship with him, but he's not our Senator yet. Uh, so we're trying to build that, but I think having this. You know, having a statement for ourselves wouldn't be a bad idea. Uh, I think obviously the biggest thing for us is home rule, kind of preservation of our own authority to kind of dictate what we're gonna do. Uh, but there are other things too. Water, another one. That's a big one for us too. We gotta make sure that they're really investing in water quality. There has been a lot of efforts at the state level for that, but. You gotta keep on them or else it won't continue. So that's one of those things we need to continue with. So. Uh, we'll probably bring some of those to you, give you some options, just kind of what those look like. If you wanna look at this, the league statement, again, it's probably fifty points. Uh, but that's out on their website and I can get you a paper copy if you wanna read that too. So. Um, that is everything I have, sir.
I would, uh, I would just uh, echo what you said on the, on the statement of municipal policy regarding legislature. It's. It's really the height of of irony, and we actually had a little bit of spirited back and forth on this with the uh, with our particular representative. Really kind of ironic that, uh, you know, every year home rule gets attacked in some, some, in some area, some way by the state legislature. And there are legislators in Topeka that believe that we don't know what we're doing. We don't have the ability to govern. You know, our our s- our citis- our city, you know, and and uh. And then they turn around and complain to the heavens about the federal government doing the same thing, you know? And it is just, I find that highly ironic for any of those that are students of irony or appreciate good irony. But uh, our uh, our our legislature tried to push back a little bit on that, but uh. But I think he also understood what was being said as well. You know, it's hard, but kind of hard not to. But uh, anyway, so, so yeah, we need to, uh, and I've asked Matt, we're we're trying actually to put together a meeting. With Senator Fag and with Senator Wilborn before he leaves. And uh, and Representative Owens before he departs. He's running for Senate, State Senate, and uh. If he is elected to that position, he would not be our state senator. So he would not represent Hillsborough anymore. But uh, I would like to kind of circle the wagons with those folks and 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 maybe uh. Maybe we could uh, get some talking points from that that we could bring back and create that statement from. And I also had uh, one other question I I was gonna throw out there relative to the, to the Fort Riley piece. What do you think the economic impact of Fort Riley is annually? Does anybody have a guess with what they think that might be?
There's a bunch and all that.
Well more than anything.
Would you be surprised if it was one point four billion dollars annually? The economic impact to the state of Kansas? I mean, we all recognize that Fort Riley's there and and I don't know that a lot of us spend a lot of time up that way, but. It was quite an eye-opener to see, you know, what what goes on there and and all the different people. That are engaged in the activities that happen at Fort Riley to support our troops.
Where'd you guys meet at there?
In the museum, Cavalry Museum.
The Cavalry Museum, okay.
Which has just been redone.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, it's really good.
I've been up there for a long, it was closed base now, so you should be able to go on there, I know.
Well, you, do you have, there there's the way you can get.
Yeah.
Pre-approved.
Right.
And that's what you have to do to get pre-approved. So, um. We are now at our final public comment opportunity. Is anybody here from the public that would like to comment? I don't see anybody online. Assuming Matt is you.
Nope.
Oh, that's different.
That is Matt Heim, but I know.
Yeah, okay. All right, hearing none, we'll close that public, final public comment opportunity for tonight and then go to council comments. Councilman Bye.
I have nothing tonight.
Councilman McCarty.
Nothing.
Councilman Lowen.
I know that my son will be excited and that you've approved of that. He already has plans to get rid of a lot of trees that are growing in that area.
Nice, sweet.
That would be a hazard. It would be a hazard to him and it'd be a hazard to any airplane, airplane that ended up in.
Yeah.
Um, he's looking forward to that too, and and also he's, he's well aware that the grass is so thick there. He's, he's been cutting a little bit already. That uh, there was a lot of biomass in there. If that ever went up in flames, that would be a huge crash fire over there.
Well, that's good. Good to know. And glad that he's willing to do it and and enter into a a formal agreement. That just makes it a lot less ambiguous.
It's a win-win thing.
Yeah.
It really is. So that's my comment.
Okay, Councilman Driggers.
My comment tonight.
All right. Uh, the final comment I would have is, I got the opportunity, uh, again, my annual opportunity to address. The Hillsborough High School Senior Government Class today, and as always, it's a highlight of my year as mayor and uh. You know, we've got some really bright students. And I got a little peek, a little preview at some of the projects that they're proposing. And uh. I'm not gonna say my nieces was pretty impressive, but.
It was.
It was very impressive. So I'm anxious to see they'll be presenting those on uh, Monday at the school for kind of a judging. Component and then uh, maybe there'll be some that we can uh, that we can, yeah, become before us. And I think there will be. And uh, so I'm excited to see how that goes. And again, it's always fun. I always have a good time. So. Appreciate Mr. Colley letting me continue the tradition. Any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much. Hearing none, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.